Okay, good evening, everyone. Calling to order the city council meeting of May 28th. It's 7:00 PM in the Arminia-Baldock City Council chambers. And I'd like to have, we're gonna do the salute to the flag, and that'll be led by Counselor Littman, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, we'll have the recording secretary Cheryl Heebert call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowns.
He's absent.
Counselor Littman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hosmer.
Present.
Mayor Protem Hamel.
Yeah, I thought you was gonna skip me. Thank you, I'm here. Okay, also in staff and attendance tonight, we have Glenn Smith, who's head of the Finance Department, and City Manager Scott Myers. There are no council proclamations tonight, so now we just need to accept the budget meeting minutes, and we have three of them. The first one is on, for May 13th, 2019. And there were no corrections or changes submitted to the clerk. And if there is none at this point, I will accept the minutes as distributed. Also, the next one would be the minutes for May 13th. And that also was for the, yeah, the regular council meeting. And there is no changes or anything submitted to the city clerk, so if there is none at this time, I'll also accept these as distributed. And the last one.
Cheryl.
Okay. These were distributed also on May 20th, this one here. And if there is no changes or submissions on that there, I will also accept those as distributed. Okay? Okay, there is nothing on the action, consent and action for calendar. So, we are moving on to citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. So, by the looks of the crowd, I imagine that's what this is for, right? So, if someone would like to come up, and please state your name and where you're from, and we will give you five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. If I have something to give, can I just give this to Cheryl?
You may.
Thank you.
And please state your name.
My name is Tara Shore. I've been a resident of Laconia for 20 years. Thank you for your time this evening and the opportunity to make a request of the council tonight. I grew up in southern Vermont, surrounded by a family that took heritage and history to heart. This, I'm very sure, is where my fascination and love of history was born. And since moving to Laconia, it has continued to grow. Over the past four years, in my work as the program and operations manager for the Bell Knott Mill, preservation has become increasingly important to me. And I am fortunate to be a steward of the nation's oldest, largely unaltered textile brick mill. I am increasingly aware of the immense history and number of historical structures we have in Laconia. We are fortunate to have 14 buildings registered on the National Register of Historic Places. The announcement that St. Joseph's Church is targeted for demolition is a sad reminder of what this city experienced during urban renewal in the 1970s. We must remember that once a monument of this city's culture and heritage is destroyed, it is gone forever. Quickly following the article in the Laconia Daily Sun on May 6th stating that St. Joseph's Church was to be razed and the campus sold, a small, informal exploratory committee was created. The committee is primarily comprised of concerned residents of Laconia, residents of surrounding towns, and members of organizations that work together to preserve Laconia's history: the Laconia Historical Museum Society, the Heritage Commission, and a member of city council. This small group continues to grow daily and is committed to working cooperatively to preserve the history and culture of our community. Tonight, it is a privilege to represent this committee, as we ask you, the Laconia City Council, who represent the voice of our city, to establish a historic district commission. As outlined in a preservation planning handbook for New Hampshire, distributed by the New Hampshire Preservation Alliance, "The purpose of a historic district commission is to preserve the significant character of an area while accommodating and managing change and new construction in accordance with regulations developed by local consensus. A historic district commission preserves the elements of a municipality's cultural, social, economic, political, community, and architectural history, conserves property values, fosters civic beauty, strengthens the local economy, and contributes to the education, pleasure, and welfare of its citizens. The historic district commission must also ensure that new construction and significant renovation are respectful to existing character." According to the National Trust for Historic Preservation, establishing a historic district can affect the local community by positively impacting the local economy through tourism, enhancing business recruitment, offering a vehicle for education, and giving communities a voice in their future. It is recognized that the Laconia City Council and the City Zoning Board already support the establishment and preservation of the historic character and Laconia's architecture and artifacts. This is reflected in the City of Laconia Master Plan, the City of Laconia Zoning Ordinance, and through the very recent efforts to renovate the Colonial Theater. The Laconia Master Plan states, "One of Laconia's strengths is its small-town character. Downtown, Lakeport, and the Weirs, as economic centers of Laconia, are prime areas for revitalization efforts and development enhancement." It goes on to say, under actions, "Encourage restoration and reuse of historic properties, historic facades, and interior architecture by working with property owners to secure funding and by developing a system of incentive-based zoning and regulations. The establishment of a historic district commission will only support the current standards set forth by our city leadership. We understand that once I leave this podium, the choice lies exclusively in your hands on the decision to establish a historic district commission and how quickly that commission can begin the important work of keeping the history and culture of Laconia safe. To help streamline the process, we have reached out to a handful of dedicated citizens who have expressed an interest in participating on a historic district commission. As well, we have reviewed the historic preservation plan prepared by the Lakes Region Planning Commission in September of 1982, and are offering a modified option for the North Main and Church Street Historic District as the first boundary district for Laconia." And that's in the packet that I handed to Cheryl. I thank you for this opportunity to present to you this evening and for your consideration of the request. Historic preservation is not always the easy path, but it is often the right path to secure the integrity and future of our community's culture. And so, I'll leave you with this quote from Willa Murtaugh, the first keeper of the National Register of Historic Places. "It has been said that, at its best, preservation engages the past in a conversation with the present over the mutual concern for the future." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jane Whitehead. I live at 245 Pleasant Street, and I am the chairman of the Laconia Heritage Commission. And I've come here to speak to the subject of the creation of a historic district in Laconia. I think of myself as rather a newcomer to Laconia, because I've only lived here less than four years, since I retired from teaching in the Georgia State University system. But I remember Laconia from when I was a little girl. I came up to visit my grandparents. My grandfather was President Scott and Williams. He was brought in to bring up a failing company, and he was very proud that within a year he had brought it up to viability. And before that, he had been on the Clay Commission for the Economic Reconstruction of Germany. So, my roots in Laconia are deep and yet strangely shallow. I don't claim to have my grandfather's economic acumen. I come from a different perspective altogether. I'm a classical archaeologist. I've directed excavations in Italy since 1980. And I assess a culture, a people, their values, their, the things they consider important, their lifestyles, by the fragments that they leave behind them. So, in that respect, cultural heritage is very precious to me personally. As we face the specter of the demolition of St. Joseph's looming ahead of us, and we feel the ghosts of the Putnam House, the Hathaway House, urban renewal, Lakeport Landing, behind us, those of us who remember Laconia from the 1950s want to hold on to what little we have left of it and what little of the history we can retain. A week or so ago, I met with Scott and with Ed Engler to discuss this idea of having a heritage, creating a historical district. And I said that such districts often raise the property value as well as the commercial value of a zone in which they are implemented. Scott's first reaction was Strawberry Bank. Strawberry Bank actually is not a historic district. It's an outdoor museum. Portsmouth does have a historic district, and it is the beautiful and vibrant downtown, commercial downtown. If you compare Portsmouth, which has a historic district designation, to Laconia, you can see the difference that a designation will make. Ed asked, "What is the advantage of designating a district? Why not just designate individual houses of historic importance?" Well, that, let me see what I was gonna say here. First of all, the Buzzell House and other buildings are on that National Register, but it does not protect them from being torn down by the Catholic Church. Not that I want to give the Catholic Church any more ideas, but the, it does not protect that house from demolition, first of all. And second of all, the district would maintain more than just the individual sterile buildings. It would maintain the character of the entire zone, the open spaces, the views, the monuments, and the living quality of the area. So, much more, the context in which the buildings exist, much more than just the buildings themselves, which would be like individual museums. Ed also suggested that property owners would feel that their property was being taken if certain restrictions were placed upon what they could do with that property. First of all, most of the buildings within the area we would designate as a district are not residential, but largely public anyway, or commercial. Guidelines also would be set in public meetings, and the public would have full input and approval ability for all of these guidelines. And the guidelines don't necessarily restrict reuse or repurposing of buildings in a confining manner. For example, if the music hall in Portsmouth were privately owned, and the owners decided to sell it to somebody who wanted to develop it as a restaurant, those owners, those new owners would have to keep it intact. They couldn't rip down the entire building simply because the bathrooms have to be, happen to be weird. So, it creates a kind of a protection, a buffer zone, to preserving the character of an area and not just a specific building. Thank you.
Is there someone else that'd like to speak on this subject? No? Oh, okay, go ahead.
I don't have anything prepared. I just, with listening, I have lived in Laconia for over 40 years.
Your name?
Paulette Lachlan.
Paulette, thank you.
And I live right next to Pleasant Street School. I've lived here over 40 years. I've seen the pictures of Laconia from the past that people have spoken about. And I look at the downtown, and I look at downtowns around us, and I wonder what happened to the downtown of Laconia. And I know urban renewal happened, and I look at that, and I look at what we have remaining. And I am a parishioner of St. Joseph's Parish, of St. Andre Parceau Parish, but it's still, I'm looking at this outside of my church, and looking at it from a perspective of the beauty of the buildings we have, what Laconia should look like, and what it seems to be evolving into. And it's my concern that we keep some of the character of Laconia, which makes, has made it so beautiful in the past, rather than, I just see downtown as sort of in a decline at the moment, and I would like to see, not see it go any further down as we go forward. I want to take positive steps to keep what is good and beautiful there. So, I guess I'll, that's just my, sharing of my opinion, not, I don't have any facts and figures, just that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Jane.
Hi, I'm just on the spur of the moment as well. Jane Wood, and I've been part of St. Joseph's since we moved here in 1973. And I, certainly I understand people's emotional connection to the church, all of the memories of the weddings and the baptisms and all these things. But, but we also, I think the majority of the spiritual community recognizes that a building is a building. And I can understand also the church's concern about what may happen inside of a building that has been sacred. But I think that the interest in keeping it is very overridden by the importance of the historical nature. And I just want to put my two cents in and encourage my Ward III City Counselor to take a positive view of this, and I appreciate your allowing us to all speak. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Linda Normandin, I live here in Laconia. I've actually only been a parishioner of St. Andre Parceau since probably around 2014. Prior to that, I was a congregationalist and converted. I support the development of a heritage district. I too look at the architectural and historical heritage of the church, and the surrounding buildings in that area. You know, it's located in the center of Laconia downtown, and it's the only remaining church that's on Church Street. And it was built in 1929 by a group of Irish immigrants, and I think that's significant to the history of the city. This granite and stained glass building is representative of New Hampshire's cultural history and is the main staple of cities in New England. And I think it's important that Laconia considers that and takes a hard look at creating this commission for the districts, historical district. I think it would be a great addition to what we have and what we can build on in the future. Thank you.
Last call. Oh. Okay, Bruce, get ready.
Nice tie.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I remember Counselor Hamel, when I applied for the Heritage Commission, one of the questions you asked, and you may have asked me this privately a couple times too, and that was about a committee or commission or board in the city telling property owners what they could do with their property. That was a concern, and I appreciate that concern as a property owner even. But this proposed group is not breaking precedent. I mean, this goes on all over the country. I'm sure closer by than we're even aware of, but I think of New York City when they tore down Pennsylvania's railroad station and the outcry that caused, and what people in the city of New York realized they had lost forever. And they have since saved many, many precious buildings in the city, including Grand Central Railroad Station. So, getting back to Laconia, it's not without reason to think that we could lose some other buildings besides what's being talked about, the church. I think of our railroad station. I think of the library. Anything's possible without something like this being in place. Somebody could, we could have a different council here 20 years from now. I guess we probably-
It will.
Even a different city manager.
It will.
Really?
I can actually guarantee that.
Stating the obvious.
Sorry, sorry. But who's to say that maybe we'll be in a financial difficult situation, and somebody could come along and say, "You know what? Nobody reads books anymore. They're all looking at this." Quite possible. So, what have we got that building over there for? We got a developer that wants to buy it. We're gonna get a million dollars for it. Think what we can do with that million dollars. So, let's dump it. Maybe that's not the right term, but let's sell it. And that building's gone for who knows what. And the railroad station, we don't own that. The city doesn't own the station. It's privately owned now, and I'm, I think it may be under that historical format now, but who's to say that won't change? So, I think, I think we have a duty to the future, not for the past, I get that, but for the future, to protect the integrity of what is so important to the history of Laconia. And I say that as a Laconia native. I really believe that. And again, that's not talking about all that's been lost. We already have felt that pain, but I just want to prevent it, and I think this is a great idea to go forward with that, with whatever stipulations are put down. So, thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Okay, as I said before, is anybody else? Okay, none? All right, we'll be moving on. Is it gonna be, yes, Counselor Hosmer?
Maybe just, I assume that most of the folks here who want to speak about the St. Joseph's Church issue, maybe we can wrap up something earlier here than, as opposed to waiting. And that has to do with the government operations and ordinances.
You agree.
You agree. Okay. So, if I may just address that, I had an opportunity, I know a number of us did, spoke, had an opportunity to speak with David Bowns today, and requested that the Government Operations and Ordnances Committee, of which Counselor Bowns and Counselor Cheney are part of, along with myself, would like to have a meeting next week to start talking about this issue in particular. So, I believe we have discussed the 3rd of June at 6:00 as an opportunity to convene this committee and begin discussions surrounding historic district commission. And so, I would just like to bring that up right now, so we can address it while the folks are still here.
So, are you making that as a motion to put that on there?
I'd like to make that as a motion to put that on the calendar for Monday, June 3rd, at 6:00 PM here in the council chambers.
And I'll second that.
Okay. What time did you say?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, okay. So, on the 6th, at 6:00 PM?
No, the 3rd at 6:00.
Oh, 3rd, I'm sorry.
Monday, the 3rd.
I heard 6:00.
Excuse me, is that open to the public?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
Okay. So, a motion's been made by Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any discussion? All those, all those four, raise hand? Okay, it passes, so. So, that will be on the Government Operations. Counselor Cheney.
Mayor Protem, I'd also like to ask that we instruct the city manager to query the diocese about the cost of demolition. I'd like to know what that dollar figure is, so that the council can consider if there's an alternative, a financial alternative, to selling it for demolition purposes. And the second half of that would be that the manager asks the diocese for the name of the present purchaser, so that we may have an understanding of what their intent is. But I'd like to, I'd like to find out what the estimate for demolition is, so that we have some idea of, is there an alternative to selling it for demolition?
So, you're asking for consensus of the council for the city manager to write a letter to the diocese inquiring on these things?
I am exactly.
Okay.
Counselor Cheney, would you put that in a motion?
I'd be more than happy to.
I'll second it.
Okay. So, we have a motion by Counselor Cheney and seconded by Counselor Haynes on sending, having the city manager send a letter to the diocese and asking about what the situation is with the structure and what is gonna happen with it, correct?
Yep. I think the manager knows what.
Okay. All those in favor, raise a hand? Okay?
Mr. Mayor Protem, I would just ask that that be done in writing?
Yes, that's what it's gonna be.
Just wanted to double check that, okay.
It is gonna be in writing.
Yeah.
Okay, so, motion passes. Okay. So, then, if somebody want to come back for that meeting on the 3rd, and at 6:00 PM, it is open to the public, and there'll be discussion about it and see where it heads. Obviously, there will be a lot of things we have to think about, and I think some of the things we have to find out legally is, if you drop a historic district on Church Street, does it, are those buildings grandfathered in any way? So, I think there's a lot we'll need to look into before any of this really gets going, but we're gonna get the ball rolling, okay? All right, thank you for coming. Okay, moving on with the agenda, there are no interviews, but we do have a couple of nominees. The first is Michael Delavickia, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Planning Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2022. So, the proposed motion, we're gonna wait a few minutes for them to-
Sorry, we'll be out in a minute.
We'll give them a minute.
She came in late. She was wearing a pink sweater. She's in the back, she's in the pink sweater.
You realize your response from her, just as good as nothing.
Okay, there's a proposed motion to reappoint Michael Delavickia as a regular member of the Planning Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2022. Do I have a motion on that? Okay, motion made by Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Littman. All those in favor, raise a hand?
No.
Okay, motion passes?
What did I just do? Okay.
And the second one we have is-
Thank you.
Peter Stewart. Hang on, turn the page. Okay, Peter is looking, seeking reappointment as a regular member of the Lakeport Tiff District Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of June- Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2022. Do I, and the motion is that. Do I have us first, that be Councilor Hosmer?
Second.
And Councilor Haynes seconds it. All those in favor? Okay, the motion passes. All right. There are no communications. There is a public hearing. We have a public hearing for the, hearing on the ordinance of 2019-119-10- parentheses, A parentheses, 3, relative to amending Chapter 119 Building Construction Standards. Dean, did you want to bring anything else up on that? Does any, anybody have any questions for Dean?
No.
No? Okay, 'cause I think you went over it last time we were here, so. So we will open the public hearing at 7:31. And there's anybody that would like to speak on this public hearing referencing the code enforcement, buildings, building construction standards, code enforcement. And seeing none, we'll close the meeting at 7:32. Okay, this will be taken up later on under unfinished business. Okay. There are no presentations. Mayor's report. The mayor isn't here, but I'd like to say a couple things as Mayor Protam. It's basically about the Memorial Day celebration we had yesterday. I thought it went very well, very amazing. VFW Legion did an outstanding job again of putting together the ceremony. The congregation of churches throughout Laconia for putting on the flag display, the field of flags, which was very, very impressive. 3,936 flags were there representing the names of all the war memorial monuments at the square. It was very touching, and I want to thank them for doing that and showing our respect to our veterans. Okay, committee reports, I don't believe there are any. And I don't, is there any liaison reports from any council members? No? Okay. So we are down to citizens' comments on current agenda items. So is anybody that would like to comment on a current agenda item? Charlie?
Oh, God. I'm glad I brought, you know, good, good feelings to everybody here, at least some of you. Yeah, bad penny, bad penny. Thank you, thank you. And this is just a question because I undoubtedly must have missed something, and this is on unfinished business, I don't know if you're even gonna get to it tonight, but it's on the agenda. And that was-
Get to it.
With regards to Route 11B discontinuance. And I was just curious what that was, because I was afraid once you started talking about it, I couldn't ask, ask anything.
Route 11, oh, oh, okay. That, do you want to know about that now?
Well, you gonna talk about it tonight?
We are.
I would love to know, just so, just-
It says, "We're not discontinuing Route 11B."
Right.
That was close.
It says discontinuance, so that's what caught my eye.
It, it's a portion of property that runs along Route 11B that the state supposedly maintains now, but then gonna relinquish control of it. It's not the road. So you can still travel that road?
Oh, I'm well aware we can travel it, but I was just, so that's where on 11B?
Uh, right by the entrance to Governor's Island. There's a stretch of road there that borders a house.
Thank you very much.
Whether its wall is.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you very much, good luck. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to request to comment on current agenda items? So city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. So let's talk about construction projects, 'cause we've got a couple of those going on in the city.
I missed.
If you hadn't run across one, I'm sure you will. But we do have the base layer of asphalt down on Core Street, so that's very exciting. Work will continue on the sidewalks in that area over the next couple of weeks, and doing some of the tie-ins with the streets, but that phase is getting very close to coming to an end. We are out of the intersection in Lakeport with Union Ave, Elm Street, and Clinton Ave. Work will continue down Union Ave towards Stark Street, but again, we're out of the intersection, at least for the time being, as well. The Water Department is on Messer Street, doing some work in advance of the city going in and completing a drainage project there, and then tying in with the paving. That's my understanding, that we have Liberty Utilities coming in on the other end of Church Street, probably the next week or so, to be upgrading some of their gas facilities, and that'll be occurring from the Church Street portion of Messer Street. So a lot of work will continue. We will be trying to button up best we can for Motorcycle Week to not be in the main thoroughfares. Our crews will still be busy, our contractors will still be busy, we'll be working on some of the hardscapes of, I believe, four intersections for the ADA compliance signalization upgrades for the pedestrian crossings would be going on. We'll be looking to pave Lexington Drive down to Primrose North, I think it is, sometime in June as well. So we're gonna try to get the crews off of the main thoroughfares, and focus on some other work going on that will be less invasive, if you will. So those are the highlights on some of the street projects. We are also on the Riverwalk down here at the end of City Hall behind the spa. That bridge is in, we're just waiting on the railings coming in, which are due supposedly the first week of June to be installed, then that portion of the project will be complete and fully open to the public. We've kind of held off on the Riverwalk extension down behind the Landmark Inn, and, and across the river from the Beacon West condos, because the Landmark is still wrapping up some exterior work, but as soon as they're out of the way, we don't want to impede on their project, we'll be doing that portion of the Riverwalk over there as well. I did meet out at the Pearlie Pond site with Councilor Cheney, Councilor Hamel, a member of the Pearlie family, who's Alan Goffier, city staff, as well as a engineer from Ris Fra Shumway, to kind of talk about a first approach to access to the pond for the cleanup, about what may be involved with, with, if anything, with the Department of Environmental Services at the state level, if we're doing some kind of a minor dredge, or pulling out some hardscape that is kind of overgrown and taken over the edge. So that was good, that we've got the first steps. City crews will be working on some basic areas, as far as some bittersweet and some overgrowth on, on some of the trees in there. We will be looking to line up an arborist to come in and do some tree cutting. We worked with the state arborist, but we will be bringing, bringing in a tree company. There is significant amount of dead wood in the, in the great pearlie oak that will need to come down. So those are the steps that are, that are in the works, and when we get the initial report from the consultation back from the engineer, we will certainly share that in, with the committee and the Land and Buildings Committee, where this is assigned to, and we will continue moving forward on that. So those are updates that I have for you on the projects, I can stop there and take any questions before I go on to the Economic Development Report.
Councilor Cheney?
On the Court Street, is, is granite curbing part of all of that?
Yes, we'll do granite curbing, that's on both sides. The sidewalks are being rebuilt on both sides with granite curbing.
Okay. And although it's not one of the things you, you brought up, is there anything more happening with the Indian?
We've been waiting for the ground to dry out right now, we need to get over there with some medium-sized equipment, we want to get the proper padding down to not be driving on and damaging the track and not doing anything there, and it has just been a, if you haven't noticed, a very wet spring. So it's, it's in no danger of falling, but it certainly is on our radar as weather kind of allows us to do that.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay. So your Economic Development Report is also in the packet for this meeting. Again, we see historically low unemployment, most recent reports lowest unemployment in 50 years, and that's, that's shown through Laconia, the county, and a couple of large cities in the, in the state as a whole. So not a lot to new to report there. Anecdotally, I know some of our seasonal businesses are having challenges with finding those summer employees who are available to work, you know, starting now, all the way through past Labor Day, and maybe into Columbus Day. It seems that colleges are starting earlier and earlier, and some of that workforce is leaving employee, you know, middle of August timeframe to be getting back to school. So we're, we're challenged, we're challenged on some of the city seasonal hirings. Lifeguards have been nonexistent to find again this year, there just aren't people who are coming in and choosing to be lifeguards. We are having challenges filling some of our seasonal parks and recreation and facilities, folks, to help take care of the beaches, and, and the lawns, and the gardens, and those places, so we're trying to be creative. I know Amy has done some outreach to try to find some of the folks who may be partially retired, or fully retired, who want to maybe job-share in a job and do something, and, and have some of the skills that we're looking for, but maybe don't want 35 or 40 hours a week, but is it possible to patch together a few people to do, you know, 15, or 10, or 20 hours a week type of thing? So we're, we're trying to be creative, but it is impacting our, our seasonal workforce on several fronts as well.
Go ahead.
Scott, what's the pay scale for that seasonal work here in the city?
The lifeguards, we actually just bumped up in the last year or so, to try to be a little more aggressive, and I want to say that's in the 12-something dollar an hour range and up, and that's actually more competitive than some larger cities, you know, Concord comes to mind on that. And I believe that the Athletic and Swim Club, whose name escapes me, I apologize, on North Main Street, was gonna be offering a lifeguard certification program to actually try to make it convenient for those who are interested to get certified in Laconia, and then be able to, you know, segue into employment, so. And some of the other seasonal laborers are certainly in that 12, $13 an hour range, so it's just been, it's just been a challenge on it. Second page of the report, we have the April Consumer Price Index number, the inflation number for April's in at 2%, so for the first third of the year, which we're through right now, we're running at an inflation rate of 1.75%, and that ties into what would be next year's budget, even though we haven't approved the current budget we're working on right now, but that's one of the factors in our tax cap calculation. So happy to take any questions there. And I have one appointment to share with the council, so Lynn Credo has applied, and I've interviewed her, to serve as an alternate on the Board of Assessors. She has a strong background, not only in real estate, but also in business, has attended a meeting, this is actually the busy time of year with the Board of Assessors, as the abatments, the ones that we have, are in full swing, so she has come to a meeting to kind of listen and, and learn a little bit about what goes on there, and my understanding is she stayed the full two and a half, or two and three-quarter hours for that initial meeting. So very excited to be a part of it, and to kind of give back to the community. So Lynn will be appointed, as of this evening, as an alternate on the Board of Assessors. And that concludes what I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any, any questions for Scott on anything? Okay. Thanks, Scott. Okay. So now we're under new business, and that new business involves the first readings of several of the budgets, so we'll get right into it. Okay, the first one I have is the first reading of Resolution 19, 2019-06, relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and terminating June 30th, 2020, and scheduling a public hearing on June 10th, 2019. The grand total appropriation is 74,468,146. Total revenues is 28,298,75, and balance to be raised by taxes is 46,176,271. So the proposed motion would be to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only. Do I have a motion on that? Motion by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Littman. All those in favor? Say aye. Okay, motion passes. The next one is proposed, proposed motion to first reading of Resolution RES-2019-06, Resolution Relative to Making Itemized Appropriations for the General Fund for the Physical Year Beginning July 1st, 2019, and Terminating June 30th, 2020. So Councilor Hosman makes that motion, Councilor Haynes seconds that. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion passes. Third motion would be to move a public hearing on June 10th, 2019, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input to adoption, prior to adoption. So do I have a motion on that? Motion made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Cheney. All those in favor? Yeah? Okay. It all passes. Okay, the second one is first reading Resolution, Resolution 2019-07, relative to making itemized appropriation for anticipated grants for this fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019, and terminating June 30th, 2020, and to schedule a public hearing on June 10th, 2019. The appropriation for anticipated grants is 2,191,890, total revenues of 2,191,889. So to have a proposed motion to waive a reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only, do I have a motion on that? Motion made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Okay, motion passes. And a proposed motion to move a first reading of the Resolution 2019-07, Resolution Relative to Making Itemized Appropriations for Anticipated Grants for the Physical Year Beginning July 1st, 2019, and Terminating June 30th, 2020. Do I have a motion on that? Motion by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Okay, motion passes. And the third motion would be to move a public hearing on June 10th, 2019, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Do I have a motion on that? Made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor? The next one is a reading of Resolution 2019-08, Relative to Making Itemized Appropriations for the SOAR Fund for the Physical Year Beginning July 1st, 2019, and Terminating June 30th, 2020, and to schedule a public hearing for June 10th, 2019. Grand total appropriation is 3,968,085, and the total revenues is 3,968,085, and with a capital outlay of 2,160,000. So the first proposed motion would be to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Second motion be to read, move for the first reading of the Resolution 2019-08, Resolution Relative to Making Itemized Appropriations for the SOAR Fund for the Physical Year Beginning July 1st, 2019, and Terminating June 30th, 2020. Have a motion made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And the third one on this is to move, to schedule a public hearing on June 10th, 2019, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to the adoption. Motion's been made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. There's only 20 more to go. The next one would be the topic of first reading of the Resolution 2019-9, Relative to Making Itemized Appropriations for the Water Fund for a physical year beginning July 1st, 2019, and Terminating June 30th, 2020, and schedule a public hearing on June 10th, 2019. The appropriation, grand appropriation would be 2,261,656. Total revenues is 2,261,656, and a capital outlay of 756,500. So the first motion would be to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only. Motion's been made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? All those in favor? Motion passes. Second motion would be to, I move the first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash nine, resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion's been made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Motion passes. And the third and final is motion to schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to its adoption. Motion's been made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor?
If you want a break, let us know, we'll help you out.
All right. Okay. As, first reading of the resolution would be for Resolution two thousand nineteen ten dash ten, relative to making itemized appropriation for the Internal Service Fund for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and schedule a public hearing for June tenth, two thousand nineteen. Grand total appropriation is one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four. Total revenues is one million, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-four. Proposed motion is to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and to be read by title only. Motion's been made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Proposed motion for the first reading of the Res, Resolution two thousand nineteen dash ten, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriation for the Internal Service Fund for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating January thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion's been made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Littman. All in favor? Motion passes. And the third and final one on this one is to move a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Motion's been made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. How's it going, Cheryl? Okay.
She might like us to read one of these completely to slow the process. Okay.
She only took, she said I had ten minutes to do this, so, no. Okay, moving on to the next one. First reading Resolution twenty nineteen dash eleven, relative to making itemized appropriations to the Special Revenue Fund Motorcycle Week for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating January thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
It's June, June thirtieth, then.
That, what did I say, January, didn't I? Thinking of going skiing. Probably tomorrow. All right, July first, I'm all messed up. Two thousand nineteen, terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen. The grand total for the appropriation is one hundred and sixty-five thousand, two hundred. Total revenues is one forty-eight, four hundred. So we'll go through the three motions. Motion to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and to read by title only. Motion's been made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye? Motion passes. And a proposed motion for a first reading of the Resolution two thousand nineteen dash eleven, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations for the Special Revenue Fund Motorcycle Week, fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And the last is schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Motion's been made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay, first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve, relative to making itemized appropriations for Special Revenue Fund Ambulance Emergency Medical Services for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating January thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Did I say that again, didn't I?
Yes.
June thirtieth, two, I don't know why, that's January. June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and scheduling a public hearing for June tenth, two thousand nineteen. The grand total appropriations is one million, twenty-five thousand dollars. Total revenue, one million, twenty-five thousand dollars. Motion proposed waive a re, first reading, motion proposed to waive the reading of the resolution in its entirety and read by title only. Councilor Cheney makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Proposed motion for the first reading of Resolution twenty nineteen dash twelve, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations to the Special Revenue Fund Ambulance Emergency Services for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And finally, on this one, a proposed motion to schedule a public hearing on June twen, tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Motion's made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. About halfway there.
Better than half.
Okay, the next one is the first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Finance District Downtown for the fi, uh, fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and scheduling a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen. The grand total appropriation for nineteen twenty would be two hundred and forty-eight thousand, fourteen, and the grand, uh, total revenues is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, fourteen. So the first motion be to waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only. Motion made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Second motion is reading, first reading of the Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirteen, a resolution relative to itemizing appropriations for Tax Increment Finance District Downtown for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And the last motion on this one would be to schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Counsel, uh, motion made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Resolution passes. Okay, the next one would be a first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fourteen, relative to making appropriation for Tax Increment Finance District Lakeport for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and scheduling a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen. The grand total appropriation is eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine. Total revenues, eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine. First motion would be to waive a reading of this resolution in its entirety, and read by title only. Motion's made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion passes. And a proposed motion for the first reading of the Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fourteen, a resolution late, relative to itemizing appropriation for the Tax Increment Finance District Lakeport, and for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion's made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. And the last one on, for this one, is to schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. And motion's been made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
There's an end to this. There is an end to this.
Yeah, there is, isn't there?
You'd probably be hoarse when you get to the end, but...
I need a drink of water.
Yeah.
Okay, first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifteen, relative to making itemized appropriations for Tax Increment Finance District the Weirs for physical year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, and scheduling a public hearing June tenth, two thousand nineteen. And the total appropriation for that is one hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. Total revenues of one hundred, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five. So we have three, three motions, again. Proposed motion to waive the first, waive the reading of this resolution in its entirety and read by title only. Motion's been made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Proposed motion for the first reading of Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifteen, a resolution relative to making itemized appropriations to the Tax Increment Finance District, the Weirs, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand nineteen, terminating June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Motion is made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And the last, I believe, is to schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes.
So this basically teases up for a public hearing.
Well, the components of the budget are ready for a public hearing on June tenth.
Amen.
During the regular city council meeting.
Okay. Now we have a topic of amend city code chapter two thirty-five zone and creating a new urban commercial zone. This is one of the recommendations of the master plan, which was actually adopted back in two thousand and eight, is to reevaluate and consolidate a greater downtown zoning regulation. The master plan steering committee proposes to the planning board that the current greater downtown area and the existing commercial corridor along Court Street and Union Avenue be consolidated into one zone. The proposed new zone would be named the Urban Commercial, would feature one set of zoning regulations for a large section of the existing commercial base of the city and some immediate adjoining properties. This would mean all the properties in the new zone would be treated equally, and the hope is that this might help forest or expanding, foster expanded economic activity in city, at the city's core. Did you want to add anything to that, Dean?
No, I can't.
Does anybody want to ask Dean any questions? In the back of your packet that you have, it has a map of the area that, of concern that would be changed. It goes, I believe, from the town line on Court Street to McIntyre Circle, and it would encompass all the properties that are highlighted in, I guess, orangey color, so that they would all be under one zoning thing. Okay, so there's no questions for Dean. We'll move on, and there's proposed motions for that, too. The first is to waive a reading of this ordinance in its entirety and read by title only. That motion has been made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor? Okay, motion passes. And the second motion is to read, a first reading of the ordinance, two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-five dash fourteen, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning article three dash fourteen, districts established, and accompany map. So I have a motion made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. And the final one would be to schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. Motion's made by Councilor Haynes, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion?
Yes, this, again, putting it out, getting it teed up to be considered.
Yes. And this already was approved. Public, uh, planning board held a public hearing, as Councilor Barnes, I think, shared last meeting, and, uh, com, and planning board has approved this, and now it's coming to council for a council public hearing on top of this. I think actually, were there two public hearings at the planning board level?
Yep.
Because there's a bit of a substantive change, so it's had two hearings, formal hearings at the planning board level, and will be coming to the city council for one.
Yeah, I, I think this is a, a good idea, because now it, we'll have the same set of rules for that whole corridor, where I, I think people remember, just down the street you have, one guy could put a sign up and the next one couldn't, and kind of made kind of a mess. So this, this is a good idea. Good, good thought out plan. Okay, so, all in favor? Okay, motion passes. Okay. The next one kind of goes along with the one we just passed. It's amend city code two thirty-five zoning changes to applicable off-street parking and loading requirements. It's for the creation of the new urban compact zone previously considered by the city council two thirty-five, forty-five C, to amend to reflect appropriate zones that are applicable for relief of certain parking requirements. And amend also changes of, uh, the date from January first, two thousand, uh, nineteen ninety-six to January first, twenty nineteen. So I guess to make it short, Dean, if, if people want to remodel their home, uh, buildings or re, or structures and stuff, that they may not have to look for additional parking?
Uh, yeah, the, the present ordinance already allows that, and it calls out a number of the zoning definitions that will be removed from the previous, uh, agenda item that you just dealt with, and so we need to remove those districts that are going away and then add in the new urban commercial zone. But the, the, the concept has been around for many, many years in the city, and this is just basically a housekeeping change to keep up with the urban commercial concept.
Okay, great, thank you. Anybody got any questions for Dean while he's there? No? Okay. Thank you, Dean. Okay, we have three proposed motions for this also. A proposed, proposed motion to waive the reading of this ordinance in its entirety and to read by title only. Motion made by Councilor Littman, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And a proposed motion for the first reading of the ordinance, two thousand nineteen, two thirty-five dash forty-five, amending chapter two thirty-five zoning article seven dash forty-five C, off-street parking and loading requirements, driveways and access. Motion made by Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And the last one is to schedule a public hearing on June tenth, two thousand nineteen, during a regular city council meeting, to gather input prior to adoption. That motion's made by Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Okay. The next thing is the sale of lot nineteen in the Lakes District Business Park, two seventy Hounzel Avenue. Lakes Business Park Commission approved the sale of lot nineteen in Lakes Business Park at a meeting on May seventh, two thousand nineteen, contingent upon the approval of the Guilford Select Board and... at a meeting on May seventh, two thousand nineteen contingent upon the approval of the Guilford Select Board and the Laconia City Council. And I'll ask, uh, Scott if he could, city manager, if he could discuss this for us, please.
Sure, this is a lot, uh, in the, in the business park. The offer was received, uh, for a hundred and five thousand dollars for it. A motion was made to accept that offer. The purchase and sales agreement is attached. The intended use is for a distillery of spirits. And it's an interesting concept. And the, uh, the property owner has done quite a little bit of legwork already with some federal regulations. A little bit of a, Council Littman was there, a little bit of a learning curve of the, some, some of the hurdles. You have to, uh, clear at the federal level for being able to produce spirits, not only on a licensing end, but on a safety end because of some of the materials that you are, um, you're dealing with and, um, you know, potential volatility. And you've got to make sure the building is secure, so to speak. Um, we've also made it clear, but the applicant already knew that within certain discharge into the sewer system will have to be treated, uh, a little bit differently because of the makeup of whatever water, um, being discharged and some of the materials into it. Not to go on too long, but it was interesting that they were going to have a, kind of a recapture of ninety percent of the water that typically would be sent down a, a drain into the wastewater system, um, storm, you know, sanitary sewer system. It's going to be recaptured and repurposed for other uses within the building. So it's really not going to have a significant impact in terms of volume. But what will have to be treated is a settling thing for any alcohol content. And, and, uh, there's one other piece I'm missing, my solids not going into the sanitary sewer system. But it was unanimous approval from the, uh, Lakes Business Park Commission. And I was informed that the Guilford Select Board also approved this at their meeting last week.
Okay, great, thank you. Any questions for city manager? Alright, so it's.
Ready to make the motion when you're ready for it.
Proposed motion.
We're anxious to get this going here.
Motion to approve, uh, the vote of the Lakes Business Park Commission for the sale of lot nineteen in the Lakes Business Park in the amount of one hundred and five thousand dollars. And to authorize the city manager to sign the required documents in connection with this sale. Motion made by Council Littman, seconded by Council Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright. Okay, the next thing is to approve the, and sign, two thousand nineteen first half sewer warrant. And this is something that we do every year. It's for getting permission to go out and collect taxes on the sewage bills of the homes who have sewage but not water, correct?
Correct, they're on the private water source, yes.
Okay. Is there any questions for Scott on this at all? No, okay. Motion to approve the two thousand nineteen first half sewer warrant. Motion made by Council Haines, seconded by Council Littman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Raise your hand. Motion passes. And now we're on to unfinished business. Okay, this here, we brought up last meeting and it's to, uh, second reading on the approval of ordinance two nine, two thousand nineteen dash one nineteen dash ten. Capital A, three. Amending chapter one nineteen, building construction, article two, adoption of standards, uh, one nineteen dash ten, A three. Any discuss, any, any, uh, thing you want, guys want to ask Dean about this? No, okay. So we're going to move on to the motions. Move to waive the reading of this ordinance in its entirety and to read by title only. Motion made by Council Hosmer, seconded by Council Haines. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. Second reading of ordinance two thousand nineteen, uh, nineteen ten, A three. Amending chapter one nineteen, building construction, article two, adoption of standards. Motion made by Council Cheney, seconded by Council Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And the last motion is to move to approve ordinance two thousand nineteen, one nineteen dash ten, A three. Amending chapter one nineteen, building construction, article two, adoption of standards. Motion made by Council Hosmer, seconded by Council Haines. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes. And now we get down to Charlie's discontinuance of eleven B.
Mr. Mayor Protam, I'm going to refuse myself from this.
Okay, I kind of thought you might have. Okay. Okay. So the discussion, this is discontinuing area of Route eleven B contain, contains a stone wall which a state is not in a position to perform maintenance, uh, on, and the abutters wish to approve, provide that maintenance. Certified notice mailed out to the abutters on May ninth, two thousand nineteen, which meets the requirements of the fourth, fourteen day notification prior to this meeting. Scott, do you want to add anything to this, please?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor Protam. So this, if it sounds familiar, was on our agenda probably within the last nine or ten months. And it was the state indicating they were going to discontinue an, an area of highway adjacent to eleven B that basically covers, I believe, three properties on either side of Summit Drive where a stone wall is right there. And the abutters wish to maintain the control and therefore do the repairs, which as the Mayor Protam stated, the state was not going to do. So it, first option came to the city and the vote that we took, uh, last time around was to waive any interest in that being accepted as a municipal highway based on the state's determination that they were going to, um, no longer needed it for their highway use and were going to discontinue it. So I guess to now finally put a belt on with suspenders, we're now going to vote on discontinuance. And this should be the last time, it comes before the council. So it's double, double done.
You promise?
Just following what the state tells me I have to do, so.
Okay. Any questions, uh, to the city manager? Okay. So the proposed motion to totally and completely discontinuant, discontinue pursuant to RSA two thirty-one colon forty-three. The portion of Route eleven B right-of-way that previously abandoned, abandoned to the city by the state of New Hampshire, being that portion of the right-of-way shown on the plan entitled, "Plan Showing Newly as Easterly Row Line of New Hampshire Route Eleven B and Decatur Street East." And fully described in the notice for this hearing. A vote in favor of this motion will eliminate any and all public rights in this portion of the right-of-way of, right-of-way only, and will not affect the travelway. Okay, Charlie? So I have a motion on that made by Council Haines, seconded by Council Littman. Any discussion? All those in favor? Alright. So there'll be a roadblock at Route eleven B now.
Toll booth.
Toll booth, that's it, yeah, toll booth.
On motorcycles only, I believe.
I'll go a different way then. Okay, uh, so we're, actually, we're down to council comments. Is there any council comments? Seeing none? And since Andrew's not here, he did, that's okay too, if there is none. And there's no need for a pu- a non-public? Nope. So I'm going to close the council meeting at eight eighteen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.